America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the guests and the attendance. As we've, as we'll move forward here, we'll look for approval of the proposed agenda that was sent out. Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Agenda is approved. Consent agenda. Under the consent agenda, we've got the minutes for the regular board meeting on December eighteenth, minutes from the reorganizational meeting January third, finance checks and wires, payroll checks and direct deposits, accept or not accept the resignation of Fernando Pizarroina, paraprofessional, approve, not approve, posting of yes, paraprofessional position. With approval or consent agenda, all those items would be approved unless we decide to pull anything out.
Need a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second. Motion by Director Marcus, seconded by Director Vosler to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Consent agenda is approved. All right, public comments. Brad? Hello?
You don't want me to sit there?
It's the annual 5.0. Student and constituent reports. High school students.
Hello, we are students from the high school student council. And this December, we have, the student council has provided a coffee cart for staff who went around during the week before Christmas. We also sold donuts to staff and students this week. That was right before break as well. Up coming, we have another staff appreciation coffee cart going around sometime in February, as well as festivities for Valentine's week, and a mental health day for staff and students to participate in during that week as well, I believe. And then another school dance, and helping out with the Winnie Mac father-daughter dance again this year, which is also.
So, I got questions, I wrote everything down. So, coffee cart, how does that work?
We bought coffee from Parrot Coffee, and then we had it on a cart, and then additional toppings were provided for each of the staff to choose from.
Okay. Does the cart go around in the halls to each classroom or?
Yes.
And offices, in offices? And then they miss the office. How about the school dance one, is that scheduled yet?
I believe that is the week after Valentine's. I don't know the exact date because there was so.
Sure. And then the Winnie Mac father-daughter dance, too, have you helped with that in the past as a student council?
As a student council, we have.
Is that a funding initiative? Or are you just?
I think it's just community. Not necessarily.
I know that the dance invited are more than just Winnie Mac families are going to that.
Yeah, exactly. Anybody can sign up to go and bring their, I think that girls from four years old to sixth grade or something like that, or?
Any other questions for the student council? Well, appreciate it, girls. Thanks for that.
Thanks, ladies.
Elementary.
My name is Stella Johnson, I'm a sixth grader, and I'm also a student here. My name is Jonathan Ham, I'm in sixth grade and I'm also a student here. In December, before Christmas, we did a family game night tribe. We did a wrapping party in the media center at the elementary school, and we wrapped our games and had a hot cocoa and muffins. We lunched in, we took the bus and we went to the food show, and we placed the gifts on a table, and we talked to Mercy, and she said how she would really enjoy it to see the smile on people's faces when they received gifts with something on their food that they brought. We took a picture in front of the food show, and it got on the newspaper. We thought a lot of the food show taking us about how I saw them see smiles on people's face, that was maybe they really loved, and we also received a personal letter about how they really liked the game and it got a smile on their face. In November, we did a tree charred with hot apple cider and mini donuts, and we brought them to our, to the staff and teachers and the bus drivers, and we will be doing that again this month, and, but we can't tell what it is because it's a secret. Well, we did kindness week February 12 through 16, and we're gonna have different recipes along those days. It'll be fun, different little things that we can dress up guys for the week. Every student leader has a buddy classroom, and we'll be making kindness boxes and blowing up those prizes and kindness messages to show how we can prevent bullying and be kinder. This year, we are wanting to be doing selling kindness, rallying us, they can send out K-pop like we did last year, and sweet treats from G-Love gave us a gift, a little box, and we got to decide what things we liked to do, and we took a vote and the kindness rallying us if we want to earn these seven. What questions do you have for us?
Do you guys know how many games you donated?
Um, probably around eighteen, because everyone brought at least one gift. Any others?
What was the, what was the most popular game donated?
Um, I think it'd either be like a card game.
I think it was trouble because we had like four of those.
What was it?
Trouble.
Trouble, yeah.
And it was Brooklyn?
Yeah.
He said that you were in sixth grade, then Isabella? What, what grade were you?
Sixth grade.
Sixth grade, okay. So, as you go into junior high next year, do you think student council is gonna be something that you'll, you'll be interested in as well?
Oh, I might try it.
Yeah. Your time with student leaders has been, has been fun?
Yeah, it's really fun.
Yep. Well, I appreciate you guys coming in for elementary and high school leaders, too. I appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Uh, seven dot oh, we've got reports.
I think it's first.
Oh, sorry. Six dot oh, finance, so fund balance report.
Yeah, in your packet are the financial report. Scott and I met last week, and, you know, we go over these fairly quick, we know what they prefer tell you in a given, on a given monthly report, but just maybe some highlights this, this month. You know, if you compare our, the fund balances from the year prior, were really pretty, pretty much consistent with what we've had in the past, so that tells me that our budget isn't, you know, really moving any, any direction significantly. If we turn the, the page over to the expense revenue summary sheet, that might be a little bit more telling. And I think the piece there that I'd like to highlight is, you know, Joan continually updates the, the budget. Budget doesn't change, but she continually gets better numbers, and, and the expenditures she's getting imposed. And if you just look, the difference in our, our expense budget and our revenue budget now this month, the deficit there is way around just under three hundred thousand, and that's really what we anticipated when we started the year. We'll continue to, to massage that as we go throughout the year. You can see that really a lot of our expenditures are less than fifty percent or just over fifty percent for the year, so we're about halfway through the year, but some of our spending, or some of our expenditures are not kind of yet with kind of halfway through the year. This month, we'll catch up a lot of that. But again, and I stated every month, and I stated again, nothing that jumps out from a financial situation that would cause for a lot, be the cause for a lot more, or anything significant in that, in that regard. And then the last report that we provide for you is the bond report, and the bond goes in, what did she answer when he said, when did the bond start?
Yeah. Eighteen.
Eighteen, yeah. And we're still sitting there at around that sixty-one thousand, you, you can see the last four months, we've gained about twelve hundred dollars in interest, so as we look at spending, our, our making decision on our LTFM, we believe that that budget or that bond dollar will probably get incorporated with some of our expenditures for LTFM.
Yeah, I guess one question was, there was talk about cleaning up that bond, getting, you know, spending it down, just one, one more audit item to go through each year. And we had purchased quite a bit of furniture with, with those funds in the past, and I think the recent purchase of the lunchroom furniture would line up with that original mask from the community, so I would think that we could get rid of that bond with that, with that purchase, recent of those funds. But they probably had that earmarked for tough pointing over at the elementary.
Well, it's all part of LTFM. It's, it's six, one half of the other. I don't, I don't, I think we've talked about a lot of things for, for LTFM. And right now, those, the expense of the new furniture is, is going to the general fund, which Joan did build a line item for that this year, but she has ability to switch that out at any point in time, so the decision wouldn't necessarily have to remain tonight, but as we look at our LTFM projects, we know that we could move some of those dollars around if we so choose.
Do we have an LTFM meeting scheduled or not?
No, we're working on it. We'll certainly.
Thank you for the robust reports. And, pushing.
Yeah, this, item number one, update on our enrollment and our pre-K threes, you can add two more there. And then also, we just received registration for a, a fourth grader, so you can see, especially at semester range, some come, some go, and we still have some others that visited our school, or during Christmas break and then after, and we just haven't had the, the full registration yet, but we do have a fourth grader that will start on February sixth, so. Any questions on enrollment there? Just want to add in regards to posting for Para, just last Thursday and Friday, I was able to set up two interviews for our open Para position that will take place tomorrow, tomorrow after school, so we have two applicants that we're gonna be bringing in for interviews, so I'll keep you guys posted on that. Item number two is the end of quarter two, January eighteenth, report cards will go home on Friday, January twenty-sixth. It was a fast first semester, everything went super fast, which is great. Weather has been cooperating, last week not so much. Thankful that today the kids get to outside, it's been the first time in a week, so it was pretty needed. Item number three, STAR three sixty testing, we just completed our round number three, testing the fellows from January through the twelfth, and we still have some that are still testing right now also, but using that information as part of the next item for staff development, we had some progress monitoring that Mr. Helber met with our teachers, and we use that STAR data to progress monitor and benchmark test type of things, and teachers are able to take that information and look at students' needs and direct instruction, too. So, that was very beneficial. So, I'll jump to the item number four there. On January fifteenth, we had a couple of different sessions going on, we have restorative practice, that was the second time that Kelly Adams came into our district, and she met with elementary and high school throughout the day. Feedback I got from that was just as positive as the first round that went through. There was a lot of great discussion, great ideas that they can take back to their classrooms and use that restorative practice in, in their classrooms, which is, I've seen in motion since the first time she was here, so that's been good. Then I mentioned the progress monitoring, another session we had was curriculum review, and then grade level collaboration. That took place at the elementary and high school, which is valuable time, to set aside time to visit with colleagues or their, your teachers. There was an AI presentation, now that focus was for high school, but we had some specialty areas from the elementary that participated in that presentation, and then we had a tech meeting here just the other day, and AI is coming, and it's something that we have to have some open discussion and be prepared for. Obviously, more prevalent at the high school at this time, but definitely at the elementary level also, can be a very effective tool as a teacher, but like, any new technology is about to balance that and use it properly, so we'll continue discussions there. And we have a gentleman, Troy Reynolds from Bagley High School, that gave the presentation, so we have him at our beck and call if we need him back, so. I didn't sit in on that present, presentation, but I heard he was very, very well schooled, and they're at the infant stage, so you can take a lot of what he's implementing, he uses for us also. Obviously, tonight is a band concert at seven o'clock, and item number six, I have our students of the month for January, Remley Reese Baskerville, this is kindergarten, Jennifer Lee, first grade, Raymond Landsberg, William Ball, Carson Norby, second grade, Finley Holland, Brylee Ellers, and Naomi Blue, third grade, Marie Williams, Credit Klinkamper, fourth grade, Reeve Garrison, Luke Rendall, fifth grade, Kellen Vosler, and Aubrey Booth or Peterson, and in sixth grade, Cash Holland and Cameron Agnes. So, I'd like to congratulate those students.
It was a quick and dirty, and what exactly your story of the practices?
Um, yeah, if I can give you, it's, they call it circle time, they call it circle time at the elementary, and it's just a time to be able to share certain things, like with our elementary students, they share like, how was your day, how was your evening, gives them the platform to share what their feelings are or where they're at. Just intentional time to defuse and relate with others, and we, like, when we first did this, we did it as a staff, and a lot of time Kelly has asked for an item, what best describes you or what signifies or who you are, and it just digs deep into the, you know, get yourself outside of the stress of a date to really open up communication. And it has been effective, like I said, our teachers at the elementary have been having circle time, and that's kind of the basis of restorative practice, but now it's extended that, where we can gain some knowledge and how to use that more effectively within the classroom, but it's been helpful for staff, most beneficial. I have a little more macro.
Kelly comes from Grand Forks, and I had opportunity to work with her really closely in my previous role, and it's a, it's a structure that allows for everyone to have a say, so the talking piece could be this, but if you have it, you're talking, and everyone else is listening, and you don't interrupt, you listen. So, it, as, as it grows, it can be used for setting up class expectations, where students have been put into it, it can be some issue that we're having in class, and how do we, you know, how do we solve this issue, and I get a say, and then I hand it to Scott, and he gets a say, go around the room. It's just, it's a structure, but it's built on the basis of everyone gets an opportunity to express, and, and, I mean, obviously, you can make it more intimate, and I think that's where the, the practice rounds that she did with our staff got really intimate into the personal lives of her, of her staff, and really interesting, really interesting, and, I don't know, I think people, as they practice it, and the idea is hopefully the kids make themselves a little more vulnerable, that they can share their story and develop empathy, and it's just, it's, it's an interesting dynamic to watch it in action. We just think it's, it kind of goes with the social, emotional learning and all that, that type of thing that's going on in schools today, so that's great. Mr. Narski went home sick, he did not submit a report as well, so he obviously isn't here, and we have no way to report.
Been doing it smoothly.
Yeah.
Thank you, Principal, was she superintendent?
Yeah, so I included my report in your packet, and I can just sound out a few things that I stated, Jake and Scott Dean went down to the school board convention along with myself, and AI was prevalent in our, in our sessions down there, along with a whole sort of other things, I think Scott's gonna do a recap of, of the different things we did when it's reported and done, but good couple of days there, had a chance to have some good learning and actually spent some time together, which was, which was beneficial and pleasing as well. Negotiations are coming nearly to an end, and tonight we will approve basically all the, the rest of our salaried employees that, that we're yet to finalize with. As we learned when we were down in the cities last week, or two weeks, I guess, well, now we can have, only about at that time, and I don't know how it's changed from last week, but only about a third of the schools in the state have, have actually settled, so we're pleased that we're a part of the group that has settled. That was Mr. Reader at Margulson on January fifth, quite fun, just really good experience. We have been team, we met recently, Dan and Don and I, and, and sometimes we include a few other administrators in there, but from time to time, it's just the three of us, but finally for next year is already underway. We meet with Dawn and Becky Hanson tomorrow to talk about the pre-registration, or the registration already for next year for high school kids, et cetera. Dan spent a lot of time on it already, but we did have a good in-service day on Monday the fifteenth, it was a worthwhile day, and, and how we did it, it's kind of laid out there, but we had three groups of staff members, and they rotated through different presentations, so the elementary went through restorative practice, curriculum planning, and progress monitoring, and the high school went through restorative practice, curriculum planning, and AI presentation, so that's how that worked, had two, two, two sessions in the morning, lunch, and then a session in the afternoon. The curriculum piece of it is really just starting some foundational work into curriculum review and, and the cycle that we, that the staff development committee, nonchalant leadership committee is, is working on as well, so just getting that back on track a little bit and provide an opportunity for our staff to take a look at where they're at with their curriculum within their department and or grade level. Met with city and Carvaco to discuss options for enhancement of the parking lot near Superintendent's Office last year, you know that the city put some money in, and redid some of the black, or the concrete work, that put those big bollers in there, and that entrance to the civic center, which also includes kind of the entrance into the superintendent's office entrance, and it didn't meet code or pitting, or I don't know, but it's being all tore up this spring, and when it was happening last year, I kind of walked into it and just said, hmm, what are you guys doing, and they told us, and, and I said, oh, maybe should have talked before it made, well, there, there was some opportunity evidently that the school district did not take, or chose not to be a part of, but as it's being rethought this, for this summer, the work, I, I want to be a part of any discussions areas, there's a way for us to potentially hook onto a project there that could enhance that learning area. There's a bottleneck there, trafficking in and out of there is, is just really difficult, buses parked there, and if you're parked, if, like where I park, where you go parked, if you're parked there for work, sometimes you can't get out of your own parking spot because either a bus is there, or somebody's double parked, and then they left their car and went into the building, and so we talked about just some different options, real loose talk at this point in time, but I think there might be an opportunity for us to, to be a part of some solution there that would really clean that area up and potentially create a one-way, only in one way and out one way. So, anyway, just some initial discussions with that, and it was good to be part of that. Fida Board, I'm on, and I meet monthly, that always meets a week prior to our meeting. ASEC Board is our special education cooperative, meet with them once monthly. Met, Ryan and I met with Essentia, now a second time, on a potential sponsorship package for our school district, where we enter into a long-term arrangement with them multiple years, and had some good discussions with them, they're willing and wanting to, to be a part of some marketing here in our, in our school district, as well as, I'm not sure if people are really aware, but our entire athletic department, trainer services, I guess, is what, what is their official name for that, Jake?
Athletic training.
Athletic training services are all gifted to us by Essentia, and that's a significant contribution that they provide us, and they provide other schools as well, not just us, but it's not that we don't pay for that at all, we get that, and so that, along with some other opportunities, we talked about putting something into a baggage and extend multiple years, and just today, also solidified a meeting with Hugo's for this week as well, where we'll talk some similar stuff with them. I think I've suggested to you that, that we're looking at, you know, how can we leverage some of the spaces we have in our, in our facilities from a marketing standpoint, we have some opportunities, we probably have the best signage opportunities in the city because of the different venues that we have all activities at, and the number of people that have a lot of activities. Yeah, we don't want, we want to do it with class, I guess, we don't want it to be, I've seen a lot of gyms where it's scattered all over, and it's, it's almost a nuisance to look at, we want to be maybe fewer, but more of a premier type thing, and, and essentially people potentially could be those people, but nothing finalized yet, and certainly we'll bring that to you when, when we have better numbers and, and ideas on that. And then Dan said, the tech committee met again last week, I think that's really gonna be a good committee for future decision-making in the district as far as we'll be with technology. A lot of, a lot of voices in that, that committee, and a lot of smart voices in that committee that will give us direction, provide us some direction. Any questions for me?
In your hat. So, not much going on.
Not much.
Well, thanks for that overview. Yes, before we go on to eight, eight point oh, I did, I should stay just in case we're here, being recorded going into April, I was recorded too, we do have a form for this meeting as of five thirty, the start time, we do have Director Munter and Director Ware absent. Moving on to eight point oh, personal, approve or not approve individual contracts for salaried staff and principal contracts. So, just handing in any other details. Selfless handing, handing out some details.
Just some background on that, if I may. Met with our, we follow them a lot of things. We call them uh salaried employees. We call them twelve-month employees. Uh, it includes our two principals, business uh director, um, HR director. Uh, director of buildings and grounds, director of technology and our activities director. Those would be the last individuals that would um, that would um need the contract settled for them. Worked with them uh prior to Christmas. They have met with each of them individually. Principals as a group, of course, but otherwise individually. Um, had discussions. I put together what I believe would be a, a good settlement for them and for us and appropriate. Uh, did meet with the Personnel Committee about that um prior to Christmas. When I'm asking that, when was that, Dean?
Was it right before?
Lauren Allison was on that too, sorry.
Right before last week?
Yeah, right before last quarter, yeah, right, yep. And um, had support from that committee to move forward. And um, so all of that work resulted in the documents that you have in front of you. Uh, you'll notice that the activities director is not on there and that's not because there's anything wrong. We're just still working at trying to create. Trying to decide where we go with transportation and that position, transportation side of things and the activity side of things. And it's just to continue, we're just still working into trying to make that the best situation we can for everyone involved. I'm not ready to bring that contract forward yet with the other four individuals and then our two principals. Our two principals make up a bargaining unit very similar to our teachers. Um, recognized bargaining unit. So we, they have a little different strategy with them, depending on what we like, what we strategize with our teachers. Um, the other groups are not recognized as a bargaining group, but certainly we stop their input and advantage and stress. From a benefits side. Looking at April as I'm saying this, um, there was an increase in VBA. Correct?
Next.
Next year, yep. Um, and there was an increase in our um four oh three B. Both years.
Yes.
And if you recall, we had both of those pieces also part of our teacher settlement.
Yes.
And I have the, go ahead.
The insurance amount?
The insurance amount, the second year is. And then um, the other thing, uh, Juneteenth is now a federal holiday, so that was an added holiday for our twelve-month employees. An increase salary at the, at the end, very last.
Was it the new negotiations committee?
No, it would have been the last December, December, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Any questions or further discussion? If you just, can I add one more? On the principal's contract, there was a couple of. One language I am in particular that. Um, the severance piece of that on page. Page four of six on the principal, section nine severance. That had been omitted from the last contract for some odd reason. It had been in there for years or every two years it had been a part of the principal. Um, and so we found that um and put that back in exactly the way it was when it was taken out. Uh, there's, and, and looked, we looked and asked. And there's no recollection of any purposeful reason to have taken that out. I think it was just oversight. So that is back in there um as it was last written. And this contract does not change any of the wording, uh, more dollars per month in the severance package for the principal. Any other uh wording? There's been a lot of contract language, a lot of numbers that have passed through this brain, separate brain. Uh, so when I look to Dean or I look to everyone, just looking for confirmation that my thinking is still on. As presented to the.
I'll move to approve the individual, individual contracts for salaried staff presented.
Just a point of clarification and principal.
Yeah, yeah. Motion by Director DePong, seconded by Director Marcus to approve individual contracts for salaried staff and principal contracts. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Was opposed, same sign? Thank you for the work done on those.
Thank you. Just uh, clarif- or more information with your approval tonight. April will work on the uh work agreements. They'll be signed by these individuals out the tomorrow. And then April will work on the back page for these individuals as well.
Nothing educational, so ten dot O operational. Uh, we've got two resolutions. Both resolutions were included with your board packet. First resolution, ten dot one, prove not approve resolution appointing Superintendent Selk as official Boston Public Schools. Representative for area, for area special education cooperative. Also referred to as ASEC.
Um, just uh, some notes on that. Um, I, I, I thought we'd done this. Um, but I guess it was over a year ago that we did it and they didn't send it to us. And now they sent it to us and said, you don't have yours yet. And I said, well, we, we haven't got it. So it's a simple resolution just stating that uh as Boston is a member of uh area special education cooperative. Also known as ASEC and that I am the, the official Boston rep. For, for Fox Public Schools. There's some signatures that are needed here and we can present that if they keep it on file.
Motion to approve. Motion by Director Bossler, seconded by Director DePong to approve the resolution appointing Superintendent Selk as our ASEC representative. Um, this will be a roll call vote. Uh, Director Manneke?
Yep.
Director Bossler?
Yes.
Director Marcus?
Yes.
Director DePong?
Yes.
Director Kristen?
Yes.
Resolution is approved. Uh, ten dot two, approve or not approve resolution directing administration to make recommendations for adjustments in the curriculum, programs and staff.
That goes with that. This is a routine item that is done by most school boards annually. Um, you know, really all it's saying and, and I, I met with uh, Boston Education Leadership this morning as I do or typically I do the Friday before the board hand, but we had a conflict with them this morning. This is not to raise any red flags. It's not to scare anybody. It's not to do anything like that. It's basically a resolution that says we're going to look at our program as we do every spring. And, and make decisions as we always do. Really, I'm going to do the job I'm hired to do. And I'm going to uh enlist discussion from our administration, from our department heads, that type of thing. So um, I don't want to make this bigger than it is. Um, but should we need to make decisions around the, around our, our programming? Um, this is but the formal piece of starting that process. And we have a resolution that's um, that I just handed out to you. That because it's a resolution, it's not just simply a motion in a second. And if you just would take a look at that resolution. It says uh, the financial condition of school ju- ju- just states that school board may reduce expenditures, may. This reduction may include discontinues, abortions or discon- continues or curtailments, programs. Um, temporary must be made if, if we were to make changes, would that affect teachers? Um, the school board then directs superintendent of schools and administration to consider the discontinues of programs. Decisions to affect trade economies in the school district and reduce expenditures to make recommendations to the school board. For programs, curriculum, for discontinues of vision. It's a lot of whereas here to boards. Um, but basically it just says we're going to continue to look at it as efficient as possible.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution. Directing the administration to make recommendations for adjustments in curriculum, programs and staff. Opened by Director Kristen, seconded by Director Marcus to approve the resolution. Any further discussion? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote again. Start from the other side though. Director DePong?
Yes.
Director Marcus?
Yes.
Director Bossler?
Yes.
Director Manneke?
Yes.
Director Kristen?
Yes.
So resolution passes. Thank you for that explanation.
Yes.
Uh, ten dot three, approve not approve mileage rating in line with IRS rates of, of six, uh, of sixty-seven cents per mile. And you know, in the um staff handbook, there's um a rate for if there's a vehicle. A school vehicle available, if you take it personal, this would be um if it's not available. Um, and I think we have two or three of these um come to the board every year as far as these increases.
Yeah, and it's just January one, uh, Joan gets notice, I got notice. Uh, that the IRS rate changed from sixty-five and a half to sixty-seven. So, and when we pay the IRS rate, uh, or when we reimburse, we pay at the IRS rate. We really do, it's that, we really don't have choice if, if that's how it's worded, but nonetheless.
Motion to approve.
Reimbursement rate at IRS rate of sixty-seven cents per month.
Awesome.
Motion by Director Bossler, seconded by Director Marcus to approve the increase in IRS mileage rate. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Was opposed, same sign. Motion is approved. Uh, eleven dot O, reports. I'll break the ice on reports. So uh, NSA conference, uh, first time attending, um, which it was enjoyable. It's thought-provoking topics down there. So um, Mr. Bushy had brought up AI, AI discussions. And um, one of our, one of our main um programs was about computer science and the, the advancements in AI too. So, and Director Bossler attended a couple breakout sessions for um AI. Um, I can't remember, I didn't.
I didn't get.
Yeah, you didn't give me a list, so I can't remember all of them.
Uh, yeah, I was basically on chat GPT and kind of what it's, what it's doing, what other schools are kind of seeing with it. Um, lots of different discussion points in each of the rooms from. Ban it and take the people out and beat them with a stick if they want to use it to let's just change every, everything that we're doing to just use it. And obviously a lot of it kind of in the middle, but it was, yeah, really thought-provoking stuff. And you know, with the opening talk on um code dot org. Um, I actually went back home and turns out that Mr. um Gutterroot is using some of that in his class. Now like I knew exactly what I was talking about. And um, so you know, things that he was kind of talking about in our opening session about utilizing those things within an elementary school as. You know, teaching it like a, you know, like a core subject, like a language, uh, like math, like reading. Cause it's, you know, it is kind of the future base knowledge that these kids are going to have. It's the way the world is kind of trending towards working with computers. And it sounds like we're already on that path, which is awesome to hear, so.
Yeah, it reminds me that, you know, Mr. Ross is all talking about, they're not necessarily talking about or teaching coding anymore, recommend coding. Because you can just have an AI do that.
Right.
Um, uh, so it's, yeah, it's, I see that alignment as far as the, you know, what we're hearing down at the conference. To what our staff already, already knows too. Uh, me personally, on Thursday, I, I attended the board chair question and answer. Um, the second breakout session was capture the plague is what was titled controversial speech in public schools, which was interesting. And then uh, don't make a difficult situation worse. I was for Thursday, Friday was generational differences uh within the school district. And then we had a, um, our, our main speaker was Ben Rugrude on Friday. Um, he was originally from Bertha Hewitt, correct, you know, district. I see Mr. Selk, he attended leadership development. Um, hot topics and bond referendum elections and maximizing benefits in the future of free school meals.
Uh, can I just comment on those?
Yeah.
Yeah, so um, uh. The uh, the leadership development one, um, time for reflection and a, and a moment to pause. Just um, AI is about one example, just that there's tons of stuff going on. And you have to certainly be aware of those and be involved. Um, but don't keep chasing the next thing that comes around and, and forgetting about the foundational pieces of our school district. That was interesting. Um, bond referendum, referendum election. Um, sat in on a session with a school district down in Southern Minnesota that really mirrors our situation. It's a farming community, it's um, um, same number of students, same demographic, or very similar demographic. Um, they were in statutory operating that, uh, unlike us, thank goodness. Um, but how they just um really brought their community together for a really significant bond election. Um, and the process that they did and the time it took and some of the steps that they took um to do that. And in the end, um, they failed a, prior to um taking this process or doing this process. They failed by sixty-seven percent. Um, and they ended up passing one at eighty-some percent, creating a million dollars. So I mean, it really flipped the script on their community. And just the uh, the work involved, the people involved and the message being sent, just very interesting. And then uh, future of school, school lunch, school bills, interesting discussion. Um, and all the pieces that come with that, you know, we always have had students fill out free reduced. And the challenge is now of, um, our families fill out pre-reduced lunches. And the challenge of still having that, that important piece of that being done because it doesn't just dictate um meals. And because meals are now paid for, you know, everyone's meals paid for, there's still a significant um. Uh, uh, some, some, some significant data on that form that allows for some other types of funding for a district. As well as passing as much of the school. as well as passing as much of the school lunch program to the federal government, which has pretty much money for the state government. State government is is subsidizing what the feds won't, but if we can get pushed more of it to the feds. So some strategies to get people to fill that out still. Just interesting and uh significant costs to running school lunches with the constant meals and staffing issues. And we we live it right here every single day. So that was worthwhile for me as well.
So let's put uh summary of that, any other reports?
I can talk about LTFM, Dean asked about it. Trying to get Jason um um to come from ICS to come on our work session on February third. He's not confirmed that yet. I did talk to him on Friday, he thinks it can work, but he has not confirmed it. Thought I'd give confirmation today, but if he can't, we will need an LTFM committee to decide that from from our work session and which we will need anyway. But if he can come on the third, he'll have an opportunity to speak to the entire board. And then we can follow up with LTFM. We need to start making certain decisions on that, I expect it.
Yeah, the the thought with um ICS being involved with it is because they've got some new software that they're finding unload enough our future building projects, maintenance projects and estimated uh expenditures for those projects too. And that will help us uh in our planning for the next two to five to 10 years. Figure out what's kind of funded that we need to maintain our buildings. Okay, so we've got a board work session, February third, seven AM, superintendent's office, conference room. And then our next regular board meeting is scheduled for February twenty sixth at seven PM. Um one question now, this will be a question for everybody there when they're here, but just how seven PM works, um see if there's any adjustments. So possibly earlier, maybe six o'clock, maybe a little bit more convenient for some. But I think that would be important discussion for all all directors to be on hand just to see, make sure it does work.
We could, we could, we could have a special at the work session. We couldn't take action there, but we can sure.
One other report, I did attend my first tech committee meeting last week. They had a discussion, um sounds like the camera system at the elementary school is starting to become antiquated very quickly. Probably have to look at replacing that. Um it did sound like we could use some of the cameras and add into the system at the high school where we have some needs for additional cameras. And then um they did have a lengthy discussion on AI stuff in the in the presentation from those after one day, so. It's interesting, personally.
Yeah, the one thing I can add with the the camera system at the elementary server one O. So it's band-aided together right now. Is that that's the biggest thing. And it's, so that was
I think as we look at a number of items where we start long way into planning it, facility, maintenance and those types of things is you know, the the last rendition of upgrades, I mean, the major was ninety seven, so that stuff is thirty years old. We've got a basket that's not all the way up, it's not all the way down, it's like that. And the cable on the lift system for that broke. Well, there's a safety chain on it or a safety strap. So that's why it's there, but it should either be up or it should be down. Now it's right, James had to replace another motor um on one of those basket lifts earlier this year. And it's just those types of things are starting to come. It's been thirty years old, they're driving well, they're used every day or you know, nearly every day. Every year, so it'll be all part of our planning discussion. If you heard, you might think of all that.
Yeah. Any other discussion?
Uh and I've maintained a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Uh motion by Director Manneke, seconded by Dupont and third by Director
You can say credits.
Uh to adjourn meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Was opposed, same sign. He has adjourned.
And I hit it, man.